We're going to call it a order.
Nancy Cupka.
Present.
Terry Pavesich.
Here.
Stretch your legs, Mr. Runner.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Peter T.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Rick Pavanado.
Here.
Don Runner.
Here.
And Kirk Moakman.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a prayer on the stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start tonight with the motion for the approval of minutes for the June 18 business meeting and the June 18 closed meeting.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second, Mike seconds.
Thank you. Terry Pavesich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Runner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye, motion carries and those minutes will be made public within 15 days. We're going to move on to our first reception of visitors, which the meeting includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent. End of year financial report.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the fund balances. This is our third report of the year. We do one for the first, I'm sorry, the second mid-year point, third quarter and fourth quarter. And just to remind the board and the community members here, this is really just a monitoring process for us to make sure our budget is in line with our expectations. It's done on a cash basis primarily. We do make some larger adjustments for some things that would really misstate our position at the end of the year, for instance, our early taxes. We receive taxes in June, but we don't use those for revenue in this fiscal year. They're put off to the next fiscal year. And we've had such a problem with collections from the state that we started several years back accruing the amounts that the state owed us that were being delayed that we eventually did pick up. Our audit, though, will show, when we have that done at the end of the year, there's a 60-day window that if we don't collect it within 60 days, we won't show it as a receivable. And so we are going to, you know, we have to wait for that period of time to pass if we can complete our audit, and then we'll have an exact accounting for where we are. But this just gives us a good idea of where we are going into the budget planning process that we're now concluding, but before we pass the final budget, we want to take a look at everything. And we're pretty pleased, we're off $89 million worth of revenues. We're off $282,000 overall between the revenue expenditures and the change in position. We had budgeted for no increase. We did have a decrease, although last year, again, at this stage where there was a lot of variables still in play, we were trying to increase our fund balance by a million dollars and we increased it by 1.4 million dollars. So that's the kind of play we have between the years, that, you know, we try and keep that within a half percent to 1% typically for the net amount between the two. The reason we do run over on revenues compared to budget is that often when we prepare our budget, we don't have final numbers from the state in terms of the revenues that they're going to make available to us, or the Fed. What they do is everybody across, well, at least in Illinois, we put in our requests for the budget from some federal projects that we have, and if there's money left over, they reallocate it to us. So that increases both the revenues and the expenditures when we actually get the dollars and use them in our programs. So, we're pretty pleased we ended up with this. One last note, just another thing that adds to the variation, the second line item down, the Ed Fund Health Account. This year, we just take what the cash balance is at the end of the year, and it's $2.2 million. And so this year, it was actually $36,000 lower than it was last year. Last year, it was $217,000 higher than it was. That account fluctuates very much just because of monthly bills for claims paid. Again, we'll have a fuller accounting, a better accounting of the educational fund after we see what the runout is and some payables that we have that actually go back to services that occurred in June. So, it's just kind of a rough look at it, pretty pleased with where it came out. Let's take a look at the revenues quickly, and I won't go through everything that's in the memo. Property tax, because we have it in hand when we do our budget, we have a pretty good idea. We do get a little bit extra sometimes from prior years that the county's been holding onto for appeals, so sometimes we get a little bit more in that account. Replacement taxes was a nice surprise. We were told it was going to drop by $250,000, only went down by 170. It could be that if they did take 250 off the table, but then there were more replacement taxes paid, that's more likely what happened than they had anticipated. So the Illinois Department of Revenue gave us some conservative figures, and we did better with replacement taxes than we expected. Interest income has been, you know, finally coming up. For years, I've been saying it's going to go up, finally it did. Last year about this time, our investment portfolio was about 1% lower, 1.1%. This year, we're about 2.1%. So we do expect another couple of interest moves by the Fed, which does affect the interest rates in the market. And so we expect to be able to budget even higher number for next year. So that's one of the bright spots that we are looking forward to as we develop our budget for next year. Nothing really too exciting, other than we look at the last two items, the general state aid and the federal aid. The state has, we've got to say it when they do it, they actually did catch up quite a bit of the backlog that they had been promising last year. They were $1.7 million behind. This year, we're only $485,000 behind what they should have paid us by this point in time. So they made up the $1.2 million difference during the course of the year. And the Fed, last year, owed us $420,000. This year was only $160,000 at the end of the year. So both those large accounts have been caught up closer to budget, actually exceeding budget, which is a good thing, because we're never sure when we're going to get from here that those entities from year to year. And on the expenditure side, if, I'll throw that guy up here for us, okay, so this is where we had some volatility. There's a couple of things that really didn't pan out, I'll say a couple, like the food program, they did well in terms of the purchase services. Our salaries and benefits are almost always really tight, like they are here. One thing on the benefits is the I M R F fund did the mid-year, we get a new rate on a calendar year basis, so mid-year, the rate did go up for the cost there. But we also just missed some people, quite honestly, when we did our pull down off the system, and so we didn't have all the I M R Fs, so we overspent that line item, and that's something we've corrected for this year. It was a rarity, we did not have that happen to us before. But the, back in the purchase services, we have, both transportation costs, which we were hoping to cut out a couple of routes last year, but the ridership just wouldn't let us do it, the way the kids are spread out. In order, we have a standard for how long to keep the kids on the bus, or no longer than for a child to be on a bus. Our target is usually 45 minutes. We don't want any bus to be longer than a 45-minute run, and we don't want more than 40, if we can, 40 kids on a bus, even though there's seats for, I think, 44 or 46, there's some kids that, like me, I needed a full seat when I was a kid, so we allow a little bit of room for those guys. And then our legal bills are, we've been having, we have some legal issues this year, we've been fighting some lawsuits, and so our legal fees are up a bit, all contributing to that purchase services are over-expanding a little larger than we normally expect. If we look at the capital outlay, the only thing surprising there was, if you recall, in the second quarter, we had a special needs student at the T-99 facility that was wheelchair-bound, and for him to get access to his job and to get out of the T-99, we had to buy, we weren't expecting that, but he moved into the district during the year. And so we have purchased a wheelchair-accessible van for that student, because he'll be with us for a number of years, we believe. And we had used up the capacity we had in the other vans, so that was the only little unexpected thing with capital outlay. Tuition and special ed are always volatile. We overspent some of this budget a little bit, and those are things that we really, you know, work very hard, and I think you're going to hear not too long from now, an update on the special ed program, that we're getting a lot of new kids. Our enrollment in that particular area is going up, and so that's going to be one of the toughest things that we fight next year in terms of the budget, in terms of finding ways to afford some of those expenses that we have. We have to pay them, and so it'll mean we're really digging deep to try and keep our total budget, again, this is monitor to help our budget. It's going to be going up again next year, so we're going to have some more kids. And we're doing a really good job of bringing more kids into the district rather than paying tuition, but we still have a large number of kids coming in next year.
And our SACID rates are going to go up?
Pardon?
Our SACID rates are going to go up?
Yeah, it's, we always expect that. I mean, really, because a lot of special ed costs are medical-related, and also just finding people, it's tougher. It's a tough area to find good special ed people, and so they, generally, they have a high number of degrees and are very specialized, and it's a very expensive area. One and a half years working on a special ed co-op as a business manager, I was astounded how, you know, I was on the other side having to tell the schools why their expenses are going up, so I do understand what's going on in the background there. So that's it, we're relatively pleased with it, the budget overall, you know, we're off by 1% on the expenditures and 1% on the revenues individually, so we're pretty pleased with how we came out this year. Any questions?
I'm always amazed at how close to budget you're going to be. I mean, you know, it's a guess, a budget is a guess, it's a swag, and...
Our biggest cost, obviously, salary and benefits is, you know, usually you have that in places, there's variables in there, there're like substitutes and illnesses, and we've actually had our share of those this year, maternity leaves.
That's amazing.
Yeah, and so then your...
Because we have a younger staff.
Your subs costs go up, and whether you have a heavy snow and you're a real snowy season, you have a lot of overtime and custodial and maintenance, so, I mean, there are factors, but a lot of our budget, quite honestly, is pretty well fixed. It's, the other things that come into play that you've got to watch a little closer. Thank you, though.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's move on. Thank you, Rick Mark.
Rick Mark.
Rick Mark. Let's move on to the deep equity program.
Hi, everyone, I'm Beck.
You had so well last month.
We're glad to see you.
Still can't pronounce my job title yet, but...
It's okay.
So last month, I was here talking to you about the personalized professional learning, and I said at that presentation that I'll be back at a later date to talk about deep equity, so here we are at this later date to talk about deep equity. Just a quick reminder, all the work that we're doing in this is helping us with our domain two goal, the development and evaluation of staff, enhancing current practices, identifying strengths and challenges, and creating new processes that empower staff to create conditions for a positive and effective student experience. So last month, I talked about how we have gone through this process of redesigning our certified appraisal system. We designed and we're piloting the personalized professional learning, and now we're going to talk about deep equity. So how deep equity fits in these other pieces is that as our staff is learning together and developing their lessons, we want them to look at their work through the lens of equity. So we're building out this program so they can be aware and they can use that lens as they develop their lessons. Best summed up by Gary Howard, who is the expert that we used to put our program together, and he says that we want to be teaching and leading in such a way that more of our students, across more of their differences, achieve at a higher level and engage at a deeper level more of the time without giving up who they are. So that's our goal. And all three of these are wrapped together in that we're chasing this idea of collective efficacy, creating an environment where our staff can learn together, grow together, and act together to create positive environments for our students. So our first process, or our first part of this process was identifying a team, finding a team of stakeholders within our organization that could give us different perspectives and can help us to build out this program. So we had a team of 21 staff members. There were teachers, librarians, counselors, support staff members, deans, seed experts, our workshop facilitators, those two groups are staff developers, department chairs, and then I was the administrator on the group. So the equity team, over this past school year, we had four formal training sessions with experts of Gary Howard's. We also had multiple meetings where we broke into smaller groups, and those smaller groups had tasks associated with designing this program. And then we have summer curriculum work, and I'm working still with some groups this summer, getting the curriculum ready for this next school year. These are the experts that came in and visited us. Gary Howard, all the way on the right, he's been at this for about 30 years, and we use his book to really steer our thinking and steer our curriculum, which is "We Can't Lead Where We Won't Go." Gary sent two of his consultants to us this year, so we had Dr. Kathy Lassiter and we had Wade Caldwell. Both were here for all four days. So a brief history on this subject within District 99. In 2015-16 school year is when we started SEED, and as we prepared for that, we trained four of our staff to go and become facilitators of SEED. It's been very successful, a lot of great feedback on it, and we continue to run it. So we usually run two sessions of that during the school year, and then this summer, we ran a session to accommodate our staff that can't meet during the school year.
Could you just remind everybody what SEED is?
Sure, that is a program that is focused on internal reflection, reflecting on who you are, uncovering your biases, and being aware of that as you interact with people, and being aware of what their perception is of your actions through their lenses.
And that abbreviation is?
Seeking Equity, yeah, thank you, Ed. Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity.
Okay.
Through diversity, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
So the staff like that. The one piece of feedback that we've received from that program, though, is that they were hoping to get a little bit more in terms of how can they apply that to their workplace. So they see the value in the internal component of it, but they would like more, more of how do I apply this to the classroom, or any other role that I serve within the district. So the spring of 2017, we had a faculty session regarding equity. That session included videos of students expressing themselves and explaining what their experience is like within our district. It was really good for our staff to hear from our students. And then at the end of that school year, June 9 of 2017, we brought Gary Howard in on our institute day, the last day of the school year, and all faculty had a session with Gary, talking about his deep equity process. So then this past school year, on opening day, we had another session where the faculty was reflecting on what Gary had said and talked about on June 9, and then we started to get into how can we apply this into our workplace. And then at the same time, we identified that equity team, and then that equity team, we met throughout this past school year to plan what would a large-scale implementation of this program look like. So this is what our implementation is going to look like. I'll start on the right side of the slide here. We realized during this process that to do this with fidelity, we're going to need to spend multiple days on it with people really taking us deep. So we're going to do a four-full-day workshop with participants in this program. We're calling it Deep Dive into Deep Equity. So it's four days of really starting out with the beginning of this program, which is building tone and trust among the participants, and then working our way through that process to applications in our workplace. Because we have, we can't train everybody all in the same year, we decided that this upcoming school year, 2018 and 19, our target audience for the workshop is going to be our administrators and our department chairs, so that way they are ready as their staff start to take this workshop to lead those conversations in their departments and within their schools. And then 2019-2020, we're going to open it up to all staff. So this is a little different than our instructional workshops, in that this will be open to all staff, not just our faculty. So anybody that works within our organization will have access to this, and will be able to participate in this.
Will it be four separate days throughout the year, or four back-to-back-to-back-to-back?
Four throughout the year.
Okay.
Spread throughout the year. So the other thing that the equity team recognized is that the staff did something June 9, and then that August, they did something this past school year, and then we didn't, we haven't done anything formal with the entire staff, and we don't want to wait until all staff get through this workshop before we do organizational pieces to this. So in parallel to this workshop, we are running all staff sessions throughout this next school year. So we're starting with opening day, there's an 80-minute session, and then we have four of our late-start mornings throughout the school year, spaced throughout the school year, also 80-minute sessions, and those are all staff also. So anybody that works in our buildings is going to be in those sessions, engaging in this learning around equity. And then our administrators and department chairs, they're doing that, but then they're also doing this deep dive four-day workshop.
So indulge me for a second.
Yeah.
A lot of good information, but what does this look like from a teacher perspective? I see the implementation, I see kind of reasons we're doing it, but in a practical manner, how is it applied, and what do the teachers actually go through as this deep equity is being implemented?
Sure, so this deep equity is a four-phase process, and it's designed that the team that you go through this process with is the team that you go through the whole time. So it starts out with building tone and trust, so creating an environment in that learning space for the adults to be able to fully express their views, uncover their views. We move through a personal journey, which is uncovering SEED-like stuff, uncovering your biases and your thoughts. We do some work on social justice, and then once we do that, then our final session is, let's talk about how we can apply this to our workplace. So it will be lesson planning, classroom applications, anything within the classroom, could be the curriculum, it could be procedures within the classroom for the teacher to apply it there. We're changing this a little bit because this deep equity program says classroom applications, but it's all staff, so we were changing it from classroom applications to school-based. So our secretarial staff, their fourth day is going to be designed around, within their workplace, how can they apply these things that they learned on those first three days?
I guess also, like you said, you're doing curriculum work this summer.
Mm-hmm.
What part of the curriculum are you changing or adding?
Not student curriculum, professional development curriculum.
Oh.
So what's being taught during that workshop, and then what's being taught during the later days?
When it does get down into the student level, what would, like, as a teacher, what could I expect be doing different under this program than what I'm doing prior to this program?
Yeah, so I'm not an expert in all curriculum areas, but that's the reason why we want the administrators and the chairs in first, so they can start to think about how is this going to be applied into our social studies, or our science, or our PE. And at the same time, we work in PLCs, so the idea is that this program opens up ideas, and then when they get into their PLCs in their department meetings, they're the professionals, and they can figure out how, as a group, they want to modify.
Is this so much, I'm sorry, were you done?
Oh, yeah.
Is this so much, though, about changes to student curriculum as behavior change for teachers?
It can be both, right? Right?
You know, because I really commend you, because we know from organizational theory that you have to get leadership on board first, so it makes total sense to me, but...
This is, a lot of the work that we've been doing around personalized learning and student perspective, this is just another piece of it, right? Understanding what the student's lens is, what is their experience in the classroom, this helps, gives us another way to drill down on that.
And are we anticipating getting student leadership in? Like, we have student leadership on the board, are we anticipating?
It's a good segue to one of my slides.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you.
I looked at the slides earlier, maybe I'm just...
It's a big reveal.
There we go.
There you go. So our next steps in this is, we've designed what the program looks like. Now the equity team needs to spend some time figuring out what are we going to measure to help us to make sure that we're on target and to help us modify the program as the years go on. So that's one piece we're going to figure out this next year. I talked about the center column there, which is our implementation, and then the other piece, I've talked to our consultants, we're meeting with them three times this next year, and so part of the meetings with them is going to be checking up how is the implementation with adults going, but then them walking us through this process of how do we design a student program for this also. So we're starting with administrators, department chairs, we're moving into all staff, and then we're designing a program for students. That is my presentation, do you have other questions?
I do.
Yeah.
So, this is, this sounds good. Regarding the student piece, you're going to kind of do this just with the leadership and kind of the consultants, walking you guys through it. And then at some point, you'll bring the students on to kind of hash out from their perspective, where does their perspective come in early on in this process?
So that's what we need to figure out, is the same company that we've used, Corwin, for educating us on this program and then helping us design our own program, they offer a student program where the experts come in, and they work with student leadership teams, bringing them through those four phases of the deep equity process, but then also helping them, along with any faculty advisors that they have, to figure out what their program is going to look like. So it's really an empowering experience for the kids to go through with the experts and then design it. And so that's what we need to decide, is are we going to go with that program, or do we feel like we have the capacity in-house to do that ourselves and to lead the students through that? Or are there other programs that are available?
I think it would be interesting, just throwing this out. First of all, I commend you, because I think this is great.
Thanks.
I think this is fabulous. And I think that as we struggle with having diversity in our schools, and having changes in the demographic, and having changes just in society, and recognition in society, I think this is fabulous, I think we're ahead of the game. And now I lost my train of thought. Oh, yeah, it came back to me. So, we, a couple of years ago, before you came, we, the board approved a new course, and I'm blanking on the name, but Janice and I know it, and we had a group of those students come back to talk to us. What was the name of the course?
Multicultural Studies.
Multicultural Studies.
Yes.
And what, when the students came back, I thought it was very powerful what they had to say about what they had learned in that course. So I would just throw out there the idea that maybe those are some of the students too as well, who have gone through that course, to tap. It might be interesting to see students before and after do kind of like a pre-post, because it's kind of the same idea, isn't it? They're exploring some of the same themes.
They're about aware of us, understanding.
Yeah, right.
Postons lenses, basically.
Just throwing it out.
Your own lens, another people's lens.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, because this is great.
As we get down into the identification of students, then Ed and Janice will help us figure out who those kids are that will help us. All right, thank you.
I'm answer questions. Thank you very much. Student handbooks.
Every year...
Going from the esoteric to the...
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Every year, the student handbooks, the discipline sections of the student handbooks have come to the board for approval, and then they become board policy. We've been, in some of the meetings we've had with the attorneys over the last couple of years, they've recommended that the entire handbook be approved, just so that the entire book has kind of the blessing of the board and the approval of the board moving forward. Scott's led a lot of this, along with our assistant principals in the building. And then Scott, you're working on, what's the timeline?
Well, Karen Taylor and Kelly Zerner brought forward an idea of creating a District 99 online handbook, which I think is a fabulous idea. It would give us greater accessibility for our parents and our students. It would make us a little more efficient and consistent when we do our changes, but one of the positive things coming from that, which they highlighted, was really be able to provide some resource links in there. So we would like to create that this year for the 2020 school year. We would still do the printed handbook for the 2020 school year, and then, you know, we would obviously talk about what that looks like in the future, but I think that would be a benefit to the district, and I think it was a great idea. So we're going to work on it this year with your blessing and have that ready for the next year. with your blessing and have that ready for the next school year.
Why would we do the printed one in addition?
That's what we're going to discuss. We want to, we want to see how the online version, if we, if we get good feedback from it, and then talk about, you know, what do we do in the future for a printed handbook?
I was just going to ask if it's a possibility to opt-in or opt-out. I wouldn't suggest just having online, because that's not a prerequisite, everybody may not be familiar.
Sure, they might not have access.
Yeah, yeah. But, an opt-out, options, if it's not allowed, that we have to have a written handbook.
Yeah, I think the printed copy is always a good idea for some parents.
Yeah.
You know.
So, this is coming up for approval?
For this year's.
For this year's.
Yeah, this could, yeah, we're looking to them...
Scott's saying we're working towards this year.
Right.
This coming school year, we'll work to build the online version for the following school year, but we'll still do the printed.
For the first time around, anyway.
Right, no, so...
Yeah.
Flight of ideas, of mine. So I was thinking, I have not really had a lot of time to look at it since it hit board docs, I don't know how other people feel.
It was some heavy reading, so...
So I'm just wondering, is there any reason we can't move it off of recommendations for action and make it later?
We sure can. We have a...
Do we have the Cliff Notes?
On the August 4th meeting.
Okay.
So August 4th is gathering action items, so we could put it off till then, and then it would still be approved in, or 6th, sorry.
Yeah.
If you guys want to join here.
I would find that helpful.
The Cliff Notes.
Is there any way to sum up the changes?
Yeah.
Well, that's everything.
Like a summary, like, I kept looking for it, and I thought, okay, where's the changes and revisions?
Many, I mean, I can, I can do that, I think many of the changes really fell in the discipline area.
Oh.
So it was really more, I think, which is a great idea, to take like our athletic code that's embedded in there that hasn't changed, that's been in the handbook for years, just to have you guys approve that officially, like Hank was saying. So I can absolutely reach out to Karen and Kelly and get some feedback on what some of the different changes were in there, but it's really consistent with what we've had, it's really just the discipline that changes.
Almost no changes, except adding e-cigarettes and those kinds of things.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we sent you an earlier...
Which we approved.
Again, it's really the stuff that's been the staple of the handbook.
Right.
Like Hank is saying, is a good idea to just have you guys approve really the whole handbook.
Yeah.
Rather than just the discipline area.
So if we could have a little more time, that would be...
Sure.
In a, in a crosswalk of changes. And I have recommended this for years, and I'm going to recommend it again, I think as a parent, because I as a parent never really went through the entire handbook, it would nice, would be nice to have almost like, when you go, when you go into a hospital, I know I always bring it back to healthcare, but when you go into a hospital, you have a patient's bill of rights, and it says the patient is, you know, has a right to care without prejudice, a patient has a right to be informed about their care, a patient has all of these rights, and then they have patient responsibilities. You know, patients have to tell their caregivers about their symptoms, and patients have to do this, and patients have to comply, and I think it would be nice if we had just kind of like a synopsis, like a Cliff Notes, where we said, I'm just throwing this out there to think, it doesn't even have to be for this year, but maybe for next. You know, students have responsibilities too, students are responsible to come to class, students are responsible to come to class prepared, students are responsible not to carry any kind of weapons into the organization, and I mean, these are really commonplace things, but I think it would be helpful to really spell it out very clearly, you know.
So the, the opening couple pages of the handbook are what we provide in our philosophy and our belief statements, that's what the handbook opens with.
Right.
And then at the end, of the discipline section is all of the kind of summary of the discipline policies, there's a grid there.
Okay.
But we could look at, especially as they work towards the digital version, maybe giving some little quick bookmarks to, quick links, quick jump to those sections in the handbook.
That would be great, yeah, I'm not suggesting that we have this for August, but it would be nice to have, because I think it's, it's a lot, and it's, I can never find my handbook, and it's going to be nice to have it electronically, and it would just be nice to be able to find something.
Yeah, because the things you're asking for are in there, but sometimes I agree finding them is a challenge, so we could work on it.
You know, like dress code.
Yeah, dress code.
Yeah, you know, I mean, the quick things that you know kids or parents are going to be looking for right away.
Once it becomes electronic, your table of contents becomes clickable, right? So instead of trying to scroll through and find stuff, now you just click and go, right? And that's a lot, a lot better version than the paper is.
That's a good idea.
So great, thank you. I'd be interested to know what happened to the dress code.
Is this going to be a one-time deal, in terms of, we're going to approve the entire handbook this year, and then in subsequent years?
We're going to bring it back every year.
So we don't, we don't like re-approve our entire board policy every year, I mean, what's the notion, how is this different?
Discipline policy every year.
But is it...
Because things change so much.
...the state too, right? Some of it is just stuff we have to follow because of, right, or no?
Yeah, and then there's just year-to-year changes.
Yeah, but this is what you ordained, in, in respect for the...
These are just all of the procedures for the students.
Yeah, in respect to the law.
So as we make changes next year, we could do the same thing, and just provide, track some changes for you as to what changed in it. Yeah, or just give you an executive summary of the changes from year to year, but since we've never approved it in the past?
Yeah.
That's why we're just bringing it once for, okay, here's our starting point, and then we could track changes from year to year.
So provided that there are some things that we are not comfortable with, per se, is there even room for negotiation on some things, or, I'm just curious, because we're approving this, and if we...
So the answer is yes.
We're approving it.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
We're being asked to approve it, and we can have plenty of discussion, right?
I'm just looking at it?
Right.
I would think that you could pull out, you know, maybe 4C or something like that, if you don't like the, you know, I don't know, I don't know what that is off the top of my head.
Well, ahead of time.
Well, in advance.
We've agreed, no surprises tonight.
Right.
I read a lot of it, and I didn't have anything per se, but I was just curious since we're talking about...
Can I jump in? A lot of it, I think, is like informational, and that's where I think Hank was saying, like, it's going to be great to have more of a table of contents online, to be able to jump to those sections to really learn about something specific, you know, intervention or support at the schools. You know, in terms of, the one thing we do have to consider with this approval for this year, is that the handbook is already being printed, so that's, I mean, we're, that's a little bit of an issue, and that's, I think, what, but that also gives us the benefit of why we want to make it online as well, to then, you know, we'll approve it again next year, because we're going to...
Faster change.
You know, we may be tweaking some things to condense it, concise it, you know, like all that. So it needs to be agreed.
Is there an opportunity, if somebody really has a problem with something, that we file an errata for the handbook?
Yeah, we did last year with the dress code.
Yeah, that's right.
Dress code, yeah.
So we can.
Yeah, I'm going to record, say, I don't have a problem with anything there at this far, I'm just asking.
But now we're all going to be looking.
The difference is, I mean, there's purpose behind us being asked to suddenly approve the whole thing, and now it's part of policy.
We're not asking for test approval.
Yes.
If you're concerned, please let me know.
So it makes sense, we would go through it and let you know if there's anything that we have an issue with.
Is August 6th enough time? Because are there differences between North and South handbook?
Slight.
Yeah, I know.
Just different information that's...
Not substantive.
But not.
So if we go through one, well...
Yeah.
And you've already seen the discipline policy changes.
Wait, 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 so there are, there are differences between the two?
Well, like the location.
And the phone numbers, and the, yeah, those kinds of things are different inside of it.
That's, those are the, so that makes sense, that those things would be different, but there's nothing else that's different?
Nothing substantive.
The discipline codes are all the same.
I mean, like, for example, I think, I think the South handbook references the care team, whereas North, you know, doesn't reference that, so they give some description about the care team, so, I mean, that's going to be different, because that's, you know, an initiative that South has, just like North will have a few of those, that will spell out and describe what they have, that South doesn't, so there is differences, but, you know, the programming and everything that we're doing is still similar, so that's the difficulty, and that's why, one of the reasons why Karen and Kelly wanted to go to a district handbook, to kind of just say, you know, let's, let's, we never have done this before, right? We've always kind of had separate handbooks, and we've kind of, and then in the recent years, there's been more of like, let's align them more and more. The discipline's always been the same, because that is by you guys approving, has to be the same, and you guys are approving that, so this is our opportunity to really just say, let's really look at it, let's kind of, you know, if we have stuff that we don't need to be in there, because we can do it in different links and things like that, let's kind of really have it just be really the same. So they are not exactly the same right now, in terms of just some descriptions and some details.
That was my thought, too, if, if they're similar, that's why I was asking about if something was different.
Yeah, so you can't necessarily read word-for-word and be like, oh, you know, these are exactly the same.
But it's not...
Our goal would be to create one that's the same.
District 99.
And then we'll figure out, how do we make the handbook then just be simplified in terms of a cover, the, you know, the names of the staff, and maybe a few other things, just depending on how we go about it throughout the year.
Okay. So is it, is it possible, since we've now brought it to the board, that we move it to approval for September?
Yeah.
That gives us time, that gives you time to put together a crosswalk, if you will, about what the differences are? I don't think we have to worry about like the principal's name, or the phone numbers, but anything that is, different care team, different...
Very similar.
I know, so it shouldn't be, it should be one page.
And I'm going to jump in, but I think Hank's main point, and which I totally agree with, is that, you know, like, we have, like, say, the code of conduct, and you guys don't technically approve that, and that's where he's saying that the attorneys and his idea of approving, I think, is a great idea. So it's like those things that are, I think, the critical pieces of approving a handbook. But yeah, I can absolutely go through and try to look at where some of the differences are, but they are similar.
Yeah.
It's going to be some of those things about care team, other things that are different.
Anything that is a little bit substantive.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Not Ed versus Janice, or anything like that, but that would be helpful.
Many of the, a good portion of it reinstates what's already board policy, right? There's a lot of the handbook spells out in common language, a lot of times, what the board has already approved within policy. You know, so really, there's big chunks of that, there's the discipline code, and then there's the informational stuff around it. I would prefer an approval date before the school year starts.
That's what I was...
I was, yeah.
Do you know, we have it in place before the school's...
Because students get it, isn't it, well, it's printed, it's being printed.
It's already printed.
Yeah, so...
So we would have to inform anybody if, if the board chose to change something afterwards, which is fine, we've done that before.
I'm all right going through, though, by August, I'll do it quickly to go through and give you...
Yeah.
By the August 4th date.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say we do it, we do it for August, doesn't stop us from continuing, you know, if you haven't had a chance to go through as thorough, I mean, we can always bring something up in October, if there's something, and you see then, right?
I think we're going to do it yearly, so...
It's just to the point that we don't want anybody to just give tacit approval, gives us an opportunity to read it. I'm going to be honest, I didn't read the whole thing.
I didn't either.
I glanced through the table of contents, because I didn't go to board docs until this morning, so, well, I know, I know.
In the summer?
I'm right there with Nancy, I didn't, I didn't go till today.
Yeah, I went last night.
Just to clarify, then, we're looking at the 20th?
No, the 4th.
Or the 6th?
The 6th.
Oh, the 6th.
I'm sorry, there is no 4th.
I thought, I thought you said it was the 4th.
I said the right date.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, that's what I want to know, you want another night to discuss it, discuss it on the 6th?
The kids will come on the 17th.
Kids will come on the 17th, but...
I can do it by the 6th, can everybody do it by the 6th?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's important.
Yeah, sure.
I think that's important.
Can you do that?
He's looking a little sick, I think he's going on vacation.
I will be on vacation.
But you read it from cover to cover, right?
Yeah, he hasn't memorized. This is what he does for, for free to run.
Yes.
Is this what you're saying, your free time?
Let's move on.
Is that okay?
Please proceed.
We'll start getting you information in the weeks leading up to it, so you're prepared on the 6th.
Okay, great.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you. Who knew that would be such a, you weren't going to like Disney World or anything?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. So that will not be, we will not take any action on that one tonight, so we can skip that one when we get to action, and then introducing Ms. Lisa Ballow to discuss some special education purposes.
Good evening, so, thank you for the opportunity to get to introduce myself to everybody. My name's Lisa Ballow, I'm the Director of Special Services here for the first year in District 99. So we're just going to go through a pretty quick agenda tonight to really kind of give you an idea of the financial outlook for students who are outside placed within special education within the district, what my role has been this year, some great outcomes that I think that we've really done in a very short period of time, and then some next steps moving forward. So, there's me, just a little bit about me, so you know who I am, I'm not just, you know, who is this person, I live here in Downers Grove.
You're a Cubs fan.
I have, for the last 13 years, I am a Cubs fan.
You had me, Toby.
If everybody was a Sox fan, you could, that was a...
Oh, no, that's okay.
That wasn't...
The only thing on in my house are sports, so, this was my son's eighth birthday party, so he's eight years old, but third generation in Downers Grove, my husband grew up here, his dad grew up here, so there was no other place that we were allowed to live when we got married. So I started out as a special educator, also was a dean for a number of years, assistant principal, and then have been a special ed director for the last nine years now, first year here in District 99. So for the financial outlook, what I kind of wanted to start with is good news first, right? Mark alluded to some of the things that we're looking forward with next year, with some increases, and we will talk about it at the bottom of the slide there, but wanted to just look at this year, and just this year in 1718, we actually ended up saving approximately, I think it, I said $190,000, I think it was $188,000 to be exact, but we actually ended up having eight students just within this last year that we brought back to their home school, so either to Downers Grove North or South, these were students that were originally outside placed, at a wide variety of placements throughout the suburbs, which also includes T-99, where we brought students back to. And then we also had three students that were attending outside placements who were dropped due to non-attendance, so that's where that $190,000 comes in for just this school year, okay? And the reason why I think it's important to kinda just talk about this school year, and then you'll see that second bullet point, is just by those few number of students, $2 million within the next four years will be saved by those moves. Because when you think about those students staying with us for a fair number of years, and many of our students, as many of you know, through our T-99 program, stay with us. Many of our, just significant students stay with us until the day before their 22nd birthday. And so when you make a move on one of those students, when there may be potentially a ninth or a 10th grader, you can consider the savings that we would get from that. And most importantly, yes, it's a savings, and obviously, we're all happy about that. But the number one priority, and what I'll talk about a little bit in the outcomes on a future slide, is that our number one priority for these kids, and why we're here in special ed, right, is to get our students ready for life after school services. And the best way to do that is to get them into their home school, have access to the generalized curriculum as much as possible, have access to their regular ed peers, and their community. And T-99, in, for example, really does a great job of that, of getting our kids into our community. And so when they're done with T-99, and they're living here still in Downers Grove and Woodridge and surrounding communities, they feel comfortable here, they know how to access things, and they're successful. So that $190,000, I thought, was a really, a good number for just a very short period of time this year to get to know approximately 75 students. We have a fair number of students that are outside placed, so to get to know them and their families this year, and to make those moves within this first school year, and then to obviously realize over the next four years that additional savings.
Just a quick question, when you say outside placed, what are you referring to?
So we have students that their needs exceed what we can provide for them within Downers Grove North and South. So all over the suburban area, all the way up through Palatine, Evanston, sort of all over the suburban area, I spend a lot of time in my car. We have students that are placed at a wide variety of schools to meet their specific needs. And like Mark alluded to, some of those are very medically focused, some of those are very specifically focused, maybe students who have autism, a fair number of different reasons of why that occurs, and we'll talk about that a little bit on a future slide, but we have about 75 students, which is a large number of students for a district this size.
So, because you're, I just, it's kind of off the topic, but since you're bringing more students back, how are we in terms of capacity, especially in the transition program?
Well, we did add one teacher to the transition program for next year, so we will have five classrooms at the transition program. That's a big, it's a big program. But what I think is really unique and wonderful about T-99 is that students aren't showing up at 8:00 a.m. and staying there all day and leaving at 2:30 p.m. They're in and out of that place in the community, right, where they're supposed to be, either on jobs, at the YMCA, volunteer opportunities, doing things with their peers, which is what we wanna simulate, right, which is what their adult life should look like. So you can accommodate, I guess, more students than you would typically think, because you're not all there at the same time. But then the last bullet point that Mark talked a little bit about is we are really kinda projecting about an $800,000 increase for next school year with this population. And really what that equals to, why that's coming about, is we have, we had eight students this year who will be outside placed for next school year, that came from their home school, so either from North or South, to one of these outside placements that I'm talking about, and three of those eight were students that were in lieu of expulsion. So these are, these are young people who engage in some behavior that is not safe for them to continue to be in the building, and so we are educating them outside of the building, so that's three of the eight. We do have seven new SACAD students coming into our district. They have either moved into our district within the last year, or they are incoming ninth graders who have very significant disabilities that we cannot meet their needs within the regular buildings. And usually, that's not only the tuition, as you alluded to earlier, but it's also the related services that go along with that tuition, so it's potentially a one-on-one aid. Two of those students actually have one-on-one medical aids. And then some of the more specific related services, like pretty intensive occupational therapy, or ideology, or vision itinerant, and sort of the list sort of goes on and on. But we have seven new students, which is an unusual number for one year. We also have two new ChildServe students, and I don't know if everybody is aware of the fact that we do have a facility within our school boundaries that serves students who are serviced by DCFS, and that that organization's name is ChildServe. And often, children who are receiving, who are living in those facilities, obviously, sometimes come in with some more significant social and emotional needs, and often, they require an outside placement as well. So we had two new move-ins this year. And then we also had two new move-ins this year of students that were currently under expulsion in a previous district that moved into us, and so we obviously have to uphold that and place them in an outside placement, and not in the home school setting. And so that's where that $800,000 comes from, for that increase. So what I would really like to be able to see is provide something like this for the board every year, so you can see not only what our savings is, but what our projected savings would be, and then also really kind of the influx of the students that we are receiving each year.
I have to ask.
Yes.
So what's the projected four-year cost of...
Don't have that, yeah, no, I, the, the total cost?
Well, so, I mean, so you're illustrating, you know, what our savings are, and, you know, how, what's happening this year is translating into future savings. Clearly, there's gotta be some increased costs that we're projecting to.
Oh, you mean, from the left, from the left, yeah.
And that's something we'll need to budget for.
Well, absolutely, however, I also think, and what we'll talk about in a future slide, too, is that every year, we are gonna continue to have more opportunity, and to continue to work with the staff on what students that are currently outside placed can we bring back into our environment. So just because, like, this year, just because a couple students started in there as an outside placement, for example, maybe as a freshman, doesn't mean that they're there forever. And so every year, I go into that meeting, and my conversation with the family really is, at what opportunity, at what time, would it be appropriate, or will it ever be? And frankly, for some students, it won't be, it won't be appropriate. But for a fair number of our students, at some point, it would be appropriate to bring them back into a regular environment. And so it's that constant, every year, kind of revisiting that conversation. So because we have that projected increase, potentially, maybe some of those seven students that we talked about, the seven SACAD students, we might have one or two of those students that may not stay within those environments. And so that's a continued evaluation every year, as I attend those meetings.
Same with students that are expelled, we evaluate how their performance is going at that outplacement, determine if they're going where we can bring them back.
So really, what my role is, I sort of just broke it down into the two domains that you all are familiar with, with the student experience, and then the development and evaluation of staff. Probably the biggest piece of domain one for me is I am the direct case manager to all of the outside place students and their families. So those 75 families, I'm their direct link. You know, they're not having to call Downers Grove North or South and sort of navigate through that. They have registration, you know, questions, they call me, I'm the person that shows up to their meeting. I'm the person that follows through with whatever we discuss at their meeting. So they're not really having to navigate a large building, where maybe potentially, they may or may not know folks, right, because their student doesn't attend there. So that's an enormous part of my role. And what goes along with that, then, is the access to that least restrictive environment. At the high school level, it is essential, and this is part of my conversation at every meeting, how can we get your student to have access to their home school? Maybe that's just through extracurricular activities to begin with. Maybe that's just through some snowball activities, or some dances, or maybe it's just a class to start with, right? And we slowly sort of integrate the student. I have three students right now, that I know of, that are gonna have a partial schedule in the fall. So they'll be half-time their outside placement, half-time their home school, and then eventually, hopefully, by the end of the year, they'll be in their home school full-time. Also, collaboration with our partner districts, as we know, we have a fair number of partner districts, which also, though, includes SACAD. SACAD is an enormous organization, it has a wide variety of coordinators that I work with on a pretty consistent basis. What's been great about this year is myself and Scott have met with our partner districts and SACAD partners at least four to five times this year, and then we are on speed dial with one another. They call me, hey, I have a new student, this is what we're thinking about with placement, would you guys be okay with that, because they are an eighth grader, do you have some other options? What do you think? You know, we're collaborating on those things, so we're not just in a position where whatever decision was made in eighth grade, that's just the decision was made, and we sort of have to live with it. We're collaborating and talking about those decisions. I am the district evaluator for the certified staff at T-99. In my previous district, I also was the evaluator for our transition staff. So that's been a lot of fun for me, I've been able to not only be the evaluator, but be over there and spend a decent amount of time at T-99. Also, the special education district team approach, what I love about this is myself and Scott work very, very closely with our special ed department chairs, as well as our coordinator at the T-99 program. So we're constantly talking about, how do we make our programs better? What's our FTE gonna look like? How can we do things differently? And because we all have a wide variety of experiences, we're all kinda working on this together, and we all have something to add to the conversation. And then lastly, really, I think, a great daily support to staff. So in the past, a lot of people were trying to get ahold of Scott, and Scott was at a lot of these meetings that I'm talking about. And so now, at least, there's two of us, and there's two of us, so when he's not here, I can answer the phone, I can get back to somebody, and vice versa. So staff have more direct access to either one of us on a daily basis. Outcomes that I think, we've talked about some of these already, that greater access to the LRE, the annual, and the projected dollar savings. One that I just am really proud of is I really feel like we've, I've developed really good family relationships with my families, and that's really important. These families are dealing with a lot, they have a lot on their plate, and they need somebody to be an advocate, advocate for them in the building, and somebody who understands what they're going through. So that's a huge part of what I really wanna try to build, as I'm attending those meetings with them, is a good, strong rapport. Those strong relationships with the partner districts, we did just change transportation companies, and I know that that's one thing that many of our families are very happy about. We are moving to a different company that other districts have really had great success with, and so our families had, so, experiencing some, some issues with our last transportation company. And so they're very happy about this change, but there's a lot of communication that goes along with that, and so it's really kind of bridging the gap for them there. Again, that special education district team, problem-solving team, we attacked a lot this year, and I think one big one was, if there is a student at North or South that folks are kinda thinking about, maybe the student might need something else, that we have a very sort of prescribed process of how to go about doing that. So we sit down and we really problem-solve, have we tried everything? What else can we try? What else can we do before we don't allow this student to have access to their home school? So a lot of problem-solving there. So next steps, one of the things I'm really excited about is the folks at SACAD asked me to be on their autism committee. It's gonna be a two-year process, where we're really looking at not only our current students who are on the spectrum, who are in need of outside placements, but what the other districts are that SACAD serves, and to see if we can look at what programming we could have that might look different within the SACAD organization that might assist some of those students, so I'm really looking forward to that. Communication to parents in partner districts, I'm going to put together a series sort of of letters and informational pieces for seventh-grade parents. So as they're going into their eighth-grade year of special education, that they have an idea of what that high school process looks like, right? Because I show up to those eighth-grade meetings for all the students that are currently outside placed, and so parents just, it's not the first time they're hearing it at an eighth-grade meeting, is that they've got that information going into that. Scott and I have also been working on, working with our related service staff to really kind of document what they do with students in our home schools, who those students are, how much time they're spending with them, what they're doing with them. And then, of course, the ongoing evaluation of our outside place student data will be something that I keep a very close eye on, and be able to come back and provide these reports on an annual basis. And then lastly, really looking at our special education programs within our buildings, and what professional development needs they currently have. We're gonna be working next year on, as you guys know, we hired an LEA for North, so now we have one at North and South, and it's really that time and availability for those folks then to be spending with our staff and our teachers to work on some professional development pieces that relates, as it relates to student need. Okay, any questions, anything?
So Scott was handling all this, on top of everything, before we, yeah, wow, wow. Cause this sounds like it's got you plateful.
Yeah, yeah, and then, but it's working together with a, with a really nice group of people. And putting heads together and not having to do it by yourself, special ed can be kind of a lonely place when you have to do it by yourself, so when you work with other people who have a wide variety of experiences, it's nice.
What is the reputation of District 99 with regard to, you know, if I'm a parent with a child with special needs, am I considering moving to this school district to have my child attend District 99? What's the general reputation there?
Well, that's a great question, we were literally just having this conversation last week, because I alone fielded at least five phone calls this year of, my student has an IEP, this is what, you know, their services and needs are, we're moving to Downers Grove, what can you tell me about Downers Grove, I've heard I'm supposed to move to Downers Grove? I will also tell you, as somebody who has worked in previous districts who have had large, for example, transition programs, our transition program is phenomenal, when you compare it to a lot of other transition programs in the area. And when I say phenomenal, I not only mean just from the student, from the staff perspective of who works there, but the level of programming, and the level of outreach that those staffs, that those staff provide families. We have staff going with families to help them bridge that gap from when my student turns 22 to adult services. That's a real level of service that not a lot of transition programs provide. So it's a blessing and a curse, right? Because we, we are, we're, we have more and more students on a, on an annual basis, which is why I think we see that, that increase, but we're providing a phenomenal service to these families who are in need.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
We, we get some state aid for those students, we're not burying the...
Correct.
Well, private facility placements, we get, and actually, bigger costs, which is, not a bigger, but another part of the cost is the transportation services for that, and we are still, those two items are still outside of this evidence-based model. So we do get a big block of money that doesn't change each year for special ed, that used to change, fluctuate based on our outside placements, but on some of those placements, so. But we do get about 80% of recovery on the transportation costs for those students, which did go up pretty heavily this last year. And, and for the private facility placements, which are some of the higher need kids, they usually medically, are usually medically...
Have our, have our...
I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I was just gonna say, if our newer board members have been out to the transition house?
Have I ever been?
I'm sorry, what?
Have, have our newer board members been to the transition house?
I have not.
Not yet, no.
I was there.
I don't know when school gets up and going.
The spring, we should probably have a meeting there.
For a visit.
We're really proud of it, but you know what, you asked a question about where's this gonna be for the next couple of years of the age, not only do we, there's some kids that will come, age out and come off, and also, we do look at things like the T-99, we do look at, now we took one student in from another school last year as a tuition to offset some of the costs, and we... Time to time, we started looking at our programs to see if we could pull together enough kids from our own district, and maybe some others, to house them in district, or have our own in-house program, or in-district program, rather than paying SACAD or another one. So we, those are the ways that, when we get, the numbers get to the right point, you say, okay, we can probably sustain this, cause you wanna, don't wanna do it for one or two years, you wanna be able to sustain it. And T-99 has been, I think, a magnet for some of these, these other kids in communities, too, so, I mean, we do it right when we do it, and we probably, we save money, because there's less transportation costs, we're not sending them up to Alverst, or, you know, these further places, and so you have to, it's part of the budget management process for this whole area.
Are you saying that having a strong T-99 is, is good from a financial standpoint as well for the district?
It's certainly on transportation costs, and also, yeah, I think it is, because we, you know, one issue that comes into play when you're thinking of budgets, and this is drilling down pretty deep, but high schools typically have a higher salary schedule, and so we have to be careful, because a co-op usually has a blended schedule, which is somewhere in between, you know, elementary or high school schedule, so depending on severity of the program, it could cost, it could be no savings. But the bigger thing that was really, I know, because it was a couple of us who had the idea to bring T-99 in district, it's, it's just better for the families, and we think it's better to keep them in their community, all these students, rather than sending them out, where they're the stranger in a bigger group, you know, so it's quality, too.
Plus, it helps the community, too. The community feels part of, of our student body, and, you know, if they're working outside, you know, at the Jewel, or at, at some of the other facilities where they work, it, it just is a one-two punch for the community.
And I actually had a couple of students this year who are not of transition age yet, they're about two years out, but a large part of the conversation at that meeting was, they are going to go to T-99 at some point, and so why don't we bring them back to their home school before they get to T-99, so they have a sense of their community within their home school before they get there, and they work with that, that group of peers that they would then transition with. And that was a big piece for the family, that, that happened for their students, so.
Thank you, thank you for your report, thank you for everything you do, and...
Thank you.
Go propose, propose state and local municipal tobacco ordinances?
Last month, we discussed whether or not the board would be interested in considering a resolution to encourage state and local units of government to increase the legal age to purchase tobacco, tobacco products, and electronic cigarettes to the age of 21. Out of last month's meeting, we worked with our legal counsel to put together this resolution that encourages them to do just that. So should the board take action... that encourages them to do just that. So should the board take action on this later under action items, I will then forward the signed resolution along with a cover letter to all of the local municipality contacts we have, as well as state representatives that represent the District 99 community, encouraging them to take this kind of action.
I think the number should go to 78.
It's over 21.
Take me a moment to hear what you said.
Oh.
Okay, master facility plan progress.
I have a quick presentation. The board, I'm sorry, I didn't get this to you till today because we didn't meet until this morning, so this is hot off the presses. So we met this morning, and these were the agenda items we went through. So I will provide you some quick updates on each of these items going forward, starting with the air conditioning project. South is ahead of schedule, where North is on schedule. All the equipment should be received by the end of this week to complete the project. So once all the stuff is here, then it's putting it in place. The guys this morning said that they would have provided pictures, but it's pictures of a lot of, like, pipes.
Boxes.
So nothing exciting at this point. But right now, we're sticking to our timeline that the system will come online somewhere between August 10th and 13th. And then, once there's bodies in the building and everything else, then we kind of balance that system out. So we might hear complaints that the building is too cold for the first few weeks of school, until they get that balance in place. That'll be a different complaint than we've ever had, yes.
Well, then we won't have to worry about the dress code.
Yeah. They said that that takes, say, take somewhere between two and six weeks to balance out the system. Yes, five years. Yeah, that'll be a new challenge for us to navigate. But this is going great. So all of the prep work that Jim and that team did leading up to this summer has really paid off. So moving forward, where are we shooting on that? We started discussing, again, the outdoor improvements. The theme team met on this earlier this spring, and now they brought back some preliminary ideas and drawings to the core team. Some of the things we're looking at is increasing our bleachers up to about 3,000 seats. That's about a 500 or plus increase on each side of town, each of them with about 42 wheelchair seats and 32 companion seats in the first row of the bleachers, which will be brand new for us, as we've discussed with the community squad rooms and some storage underneath those bleachers. And then also remodeling our visiting bleachers. We haven't seen the diagrams of those yet, so I can't give you counts, but we're, out of that theme team, the request was a 750-seat bleacher with accessible accommodations and storage underneath. One of the things I know we talked about as we worked on the referendum process was prioritizing different parts of the project, and we saw very clearly from our community that the bleachers and the turf were a low priority. So when we looked at this, we thought, oh, well, we'll just do those further down in the plan. But as we move around stuff inside the space, we may need to, or inside the building, we may need that space under the bleachers for usable space, and we may need, or we know we will need the water retention space under the artificial turf at South to make up for the increased footprint at South. So although those are low priorities for meeting the needs of our community and our school, they might be high needs in completing the project. So we might, you know, although it's a lower priority in our community's wishes to just pull this whole thing off, those things might get done earlier. Going on, we also have been discussing the idea of these prototype classrooms, since there's a variety of new furniture coming in across the building and some new classrooms coming online as a result of the master facility project. So we have three classrooms, as I mentioned last month, at each school. Before school starts, those will have new flooring, walls, lighting, taking advantage of a lot of the advances in LED lighting and controllable lighting for those classrooms, and obviously we'll paint them. And then, because of the time it takes to receive some of these items, the walls will be outfitted with writable surfaces that have magnetic features, so you can attach stuff to the walls and surfaces, as well as new furniture that, you know, is the different types of furniture we want to try out. But the lead time for that, that'll show up over the course of the fall and will be here by winter break. And just a reminder that those prototype classrooms were designed with both students and staff in the room looking at what we think should be tried in those spaces. So going on, we also looked at the, kind of the second rough draft of what some of the preliminary designs are for the major projects around the building, and sent back ideas for changes, so that we're ready here as the teams come back in August and students come back in August. We have some community meetings I'll mention later on. Around the end of August, we'll be ready to start showing this to the different teams and ultimately to the community. So we're getting closer to that in the preliminary designs, but very draft, rough sketches at this point. And then we started working through phasing, so we can break down what order the phases of the, the parts of the plan will come online, when things will be torn down and rebuilt. And that also helps us get better budgeting numbers in place for each of the phases, so that we can go out for construction management and get a quote for that in August as well. So just some quick timelines that have been updated and some events that I want you to be aware of. August, as we mentioned, air conditioning comes online during the month of August. Starting on August 1st, we'll be doing, with some members of the theme teams and core teams, going out to some other area schools and looking at some of their spaces. As teachers and students come back, we'll have those theme teams looking at the plans to make the kind of third round of changes in those drawings. We'll begin looking for a construction manager and going through that process that'll come to the board later on in the fall. And our first community meeting will be August 28th, where we'll show off some of the work that we've done at this, up to this point. Going on in September, you'll get the true public viewing presentation here at a board meeting of what the designs look like. Of course, the board is being provided some of the draft information leading up to that, and then we'll share all of the information with the public where it's at. We'll make probably in September a recommendation for a construction manager, and then we have a requirement, we would do this anyway, but there's a requirement to invite a certain radius of households in our neighborhoods to come and have a very targeted meeting around what the impact could be for their households. So we're going to hold that meeting on September 18th here. We'll do one school first, and then the next school right away after that, and then we'll have a second community meeting the next night. Moving on, fall through spring, this gets a little rougher because we don't have true diagrams yet, but we'll finish the documentation, the drawings. I left off, somewhere in there, there's a planning and review from the village. We go out for bids for the first phase of the project, and then we start building that first phase. And then, kind of wrapped into that, we'll begin everything for the other phases in the late spring. And then, let's see, I think that might be, is that the last? That's it. So that's kind of what we learned today. That's four hours and 10 minutes.
For the prototype classrooms, was it Tarcat that was donating? There was a...
I remember the letter. It is.
Yeah, Tarcat donating half of the flooring.
Carpet and tile.
Which was kind of nice. So that was, you know, wanted to give them a shout-out, because that's appreciated.
Yeah, that's a big deal. That's a huge deal.
I'm not sure Jill's considering this, but having some photos on our site of what the classroom looks like now and then what it looks like renovated would be a good idea.
They're also be, they're also working with the architects to put together a variety of forms of feedback, surveys, interviews, and we want to post those things as well, so people can see, you know, what our staff and students think of these new spaces.
Okay. Couple other items, Hank, if you don't mind me. In August, will we bring in the architect contract to the board?
Thank you. I left that off.
August 6th. And just quickly, Hank mentioned it, the village, a couple of years ago, we did the IMP2, the rezoning. That was a blessing. So all of this work that we'll be doing is considered a master facility plan from District 99, and it'll go so much smoother. So I'm excited to know that we'll prepare the documentation, and it'll clear so much quicker than if we weren't IMP2 and back to three, four years ago. So to me, that, otherwise this phasing would have been elongated to more years. So I'm very excited, and I'm happy that we're working with the village on that.
Great. Go ahead, Terry.
You know exactly what I'm thinking.
I know what you're thinking.
When's the electronic sign going to go in?
Hopefully.
Okay, moving on.
No comment.
To be noted, the zoning, we will bill our permits much faster, much easier, because we did debate this issue a couple of years ago, and it was the village working with us to help create this entity that we fell in with those parameters. That will help this go through much quicker.
Oh, yeah.
IMP, rezoning for big, you know, Good Sam, the college, and there's three.
Right. There's only three that fall in that category.
That, there's a lot more to play with and with neighboring and people. So it's 100 times easier.
Thank you, Village of Downers Grove, and thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
I would just say, you know, having seen some of the preliminary designs, I'm really excited. You know, specifically the learning commons at both campuses, just, I think the community's going to be really happy with what the preliminary designs look like, and I hope that, you know, it generates a lot of excitement in the community.
I agree with you, and I would just add that, you know, it's not just the aesthetics of it, it's the fact that how students learn is changing, and how teachers teach is changing, and it just all goes along. I mean, it looks great, but it's just going to be such a boon to our students.
Yeah, the usefulness.
Anything else? Did I get goosebumps? Okay. Have we had freedom of information?
We have. We've had six that we've responded to.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the personnel report, appointment, certified leave of absence, certified transfer classified, the personnel report, retirement certified, resignation certified, retirement classified, resignation classified, as well as the financial pages and the closed session minutes and verbatim recordings.
I need to draw attention to the revised Personnel Report A from what was originally posted in the board docs. There's a change correction to the Cara Morrissey Appointment Certified Staff Point Six Fine Arts Teacher. We've corrected the step and changed the Masters to Masters plus 15. Was it Masters plus 30?
Oh, oh, okay.
So we're still appointing the same person, it's just the terms of the contract have changed.
Thank you, Pete.
Duly noted.
So moved.
So moved. Mr. Damon, second. Ms. Pavecich.
Thank you. Mike Damonforth.
Aye.
Terry Pavecich.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye. Consent agenda passes. We'll move on from recommendations for action. Taking A off the table, we'll go seek a motion to, for the approval of the resolution to encourage an increase in the legal age to purchase tobacco, tobacco products, and electronic cigarettes.
I move we accept this resolution.
Thank you, Terry.
Second.
Mike Pavecich.
Aye.
Mike Damonforth.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to new business policy committee report, first reading.
I'll actually turn this over to Pete, since I was on vacation when they met.
I would like it noted for the record that with Hank absent, we had a record short duration.
I'm going to take the floor back from Pete.
All righty then.
So the, to summarize, the policies that you have here largely consisted of changing abbreviations and dashes in most of these policies.
This has already taken longer than the policy meeting.
We had a new policy, I thought.
Wow.
That's an accelerated placement.
Yeah, there is the new policy.
I'm sorry, I missed her.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking it even as fast as the meeting without Hank.
Do you have questions about it?
Yeah, I just, that was the one that I had questions about.
That one was added in response to a change in state law.
So it doesn't change anything we're doing now. It essentially formalizes that it's part of our policy, that we have programs and policies for the accelerated placement of students.
Okay. And before, there wasn't?
There was. They're just, we didn't have practices, we didn't have a policy.
So things like, would students go into English 1 honors? Do students come in at Spanish 2 instead of Spanish 1? Can our students come in at Math 2 based on coursework that they took in middle school? We've had those processes in place. We didn't have a formal policy recognizing that there's a way to do that. So this won't change our practice in any way. It just formalizes a policy saying we shouldn't be doing this.
And there was a new law that requires us to put that in policy.
The law requires you to have practices, which we already had, but it also requires you to have a policy that says you have those practices.
And as long as they match, that's all that matters.
There's actually no matching. It's just saying that you have them.
Oh.
Just no overlap with any other standing policy and...
Oh, okay. All right.
This is all press language.
Yes.
Cool.
Okay, I'm good.
Anything else?
Doki doki.
Thank you. Moving on to our second reception of visitors. This is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to community high school District 99. Anybody wish to? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications and announcements. Len.
We have not met.
Second.
We have not met.
Given none. Okay. SACID, I have two things of note. They started, they extended the school year programming for SACID credit recovery, and it's been very, very successful. And they have begun construction on the southeast side of the building to build out additional classrooms for their students, and things are moving along swimmingly. 99 Education Foundation?
We have not met. We will meet in August.
Okay. IASB, anything, Mike?
No report.
No report. Okay. Our upcoming board meetings, August 6th, we'll have a special workshop meeting at 6:30 PM here, and August 20th, a regular business meeting at 6:30 PM here. We are going to be moving, I need a motion now to move into closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
So moved.
Second.
Mike seconds.
Terry Pavecich.
Aye.
Mike Damonforth.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye. Motion carries. The board will be moving into closed session. We will be returning to open session afterwards. There will be no action taken in open session, so y'all should go enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.